Welcome to the October 11th, 2022 Oshkosh Common Council Meeting. Please call the roll. Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Wojciechowski.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Mugrow.
Here.
Paul Mary.
Here.
All present. And Councilmember Hanson will lead us in the invocation.
We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we always seek the wisdom to do things that reflect our concern for the people whom we represent.
And we have a student here, Chloe Studinski, to lead us in the pledge.
Come on up, don't be bashful.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice job.
Thank you so much, Chloe. And next we have three proclamations this evening, the first of which is Indigenous Peoples' Day, and we have some special guests here with us this evening. Becky Brunette, Myrna Warrington, and Joselle Peters. If you could come on up. First, I have a small gift for you, some sage and tobacco. So whereas the city of Oshkosh is enriched by the knowledge and history of the indigenous people who were here before the city's establishment, whereas before European settlement, Native Americans lived throughout the land that is known as Wisconsin today, notably the Menominee Nation, the Ho'ochuk Nation, had long inhabited ancestral lands in and around what is now Oshkosh, which was named after the Menominee's Chief Oshkosh. And whereas by the end of the treaty period in 1871, most Native Americans had been forced to live on reservations, in an attempt to assimilate tribes, their youth were placed in boarding schools throughout the United States. Some youth as young as three years old were removed from their homes, their language, and their traditions in order to civilize them into the dominant society. As a result, this mistreatment left them with a legacy of historical trauma, and whereas although Christopher Columbus may be celebrated for the scientific work of finding an oceanic route to the Americas, he did not discover new lands. These lands were already discovered and inhabited by indigenous peoples. And whereas the city of Oshkosh will recognize the atrocities that indigenous people endured as a result of European settlement and colonization, and whereas indigenous peoples living in Oshkosh represent the 12 tribes of Wisconsin, Bad River Band of Lake Superior Tribe of Chipewa Indians, Forest County Potawatomi, Ho'chunk Nation, Lakutere Band of Lake Superior Chipewa Indians, Lactaflambeau Band of Lake Superior Chipewa Indians, Menominee Nation, Oneida Nation of Wisconsin, Red Cliff Band of Lake Superior Chipewa Indians, St. Croix Chipewa Indians of Wisconsin, Sakagan Chipewa Community, Stockbridge Muncie Community Band of Mohican Indians, and Bretherton Indian Nation. And whereas each tribe has a unique history and culture, and whereas indigenous peoples in the city of Oshkosh represent an important and valued part of our community, their history is our history. Now therefore, I Lori Palmieri, Mayor of the City of Oshkosh, do hereby proclaim the second Monday in October be recognized as Indigenous Peoples' Day and encourage residents of the city to learn more about the history of indigenous peoples and to celebrate their culture.
Is this a speech? Thank you, honorable council members. We certainly appreciate this recognition. We've worked hard to, you know, that stuff in there sounds kind of bad and, you know, sad, but we work hard to move forward and to learn more about what we've lost and bring it back, language, culture, things like that. And we thank all the people in this room for being here and for listening to this because we are proud of where we've come from and where we're going. And I believe that, I love Oshkosh, I graduated from a WO master's degree, so I am familiar with the city, I love it here. So I just appreciate also my co-legislator Becky coming as well, our leadership, our chairperson could not be here tonight, he had other obligations, but we certainly, certainly appreciate this recognition that Oshkosh has given us. So, Match Moenin.
I would like to say thank you to all of the council members for recognizing the Menominee Nation and all other nations because this is going forward. And I want to say Moenin in Menominee and a thank you in English.
Moenin. Next we have Lori Warbeckes, receiving the White Cane Day proclamation. Whereas blindness and severe visual impairment affect approximately 100,000 Wisconsin residents. And whereas the majority of these persons use travel aids such as a white cane or a service animal to get around public streets and sidewalks and places of public accommodation. Whereas these travel aids are universally recognized as symbols representing vision loss, and whereas Wisconsin White Cane Law requires that motorists come to a full stop before approaching closer than 10 feet to a pedestrian who is using a white cane or service animal. And whereas greater awareness of the White Cane Law leads to safer, more attentive driving in general, enhancing the safety of all pedestrians, including children, elders, and people with disabilities, now therefore be it resolved that I Lori Palmieri, Mayor of the City of Oshkosh, do hereby proclaim October 15, 2022 as White Cane Safety Day in the City of Oshkosh and also acknowledge the importance of pedestrian safety year round.
Thank you very much. As Mayor said, I am Lori Warbeckes from the Wisconsin Council of the Blind and Visually Impaired, and I thank you so much for this proclamation and for using a part of your meeting time tonight to focus on your commitment to safety for people with vision loss and really safety for all pedestrians. Have you noticed the bus ads in your city? The council purchased ads on the side of four city buses, and they are promoting White Cane Safety Day as a way to bring attention to the drivers, passengers, and of course the pedestrians. And we're also very grateful to the Oshkosh Community, Oshkosh Area Community Foundation because they helped to fund some of those bus ads, and we'll be doing so again next year. So the fastest growing group of people who are living with, experiencing vision loss are older adults. They are, it's usually because of disease such as macular degeneration, retinopathy, or glaucoma. It's, as the proclamation said, there are more than 4, there are more than 100,000 people in Wisconsin who are living with vision loss. While we proclaim the importance of White Cane Safety Day tonight, pedestrian safety is certainly a much larger issue, and it affects everyone in our cities. When people can walk safely and we can get to work, go shopping, run errands, medical appointments ensure that people with vision loss can live full and complete lives. So I'll leave you with this question. Is there any intersection in Oshkosh that is particularly unsafe for pedestrians? And if there is, I really encourage you to all work together to make suggestions to be aware of that intersection and hopefully together make the whole city safe and welcoming for pedestrians. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Laura. And if you do see an unsafe condition, as Laura described, please use the City of Oshkosh Connect Oshkosh App to submit that. We have one more proclamation this evening, and that is the Fire Prevention Week. And I believe we have someone here to receive that from the Oshkosh Fire Department. Thank you, John Holland. Whereas the City of Oshkosh is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the location where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and whereas City of Oshkosh residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas the Oshkosh Fire Department is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas City of Oshkosh residents that are responsive to public education measures are better able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2022 Fire Prevention Week theme, Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape, effectively serves to remind the citizens of Oshkosh, it is important to have a home fire escape plan. Therefore, I Lori Palmieri, Mayor of the City of Oshkosh, do hereby proclaim October 9 through 15, 2022 as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city, and I urge all the people of Oshkosh to plan and practice a home fire escape for Fire Prevention Week 2022, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the Oshkosh Fire Department.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members, greatly appreciate it. It's great to be up here, we had some great proclamations today, obviously safety, close to my heart, indigenous people, fantastic. So for us, this is Fire Prevention Week, this is the 100th anniversary of Fire Prevention Week. We have been the longest safety campaign nationally ever, and so we want to keep that up. We do a lot in the community, we are out doing our detector trek tonight, tomorrow and the next night, where we actually go door to door and we check people's detectors, if they need detectors or batteries, we replace them for free. Every year we pick a different neighborhood, we are in the college area tonight, or this week, and we are being so pleasantly surprised. We haven't hardly had to install any. People have been very welcoming, and it doesn't usually go this well, so it's a great surprise in going along with the Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape. Please, if you don't have a home escape plan, do it today. It can make the difference between life and death. You only have two minutes once that smoke alarm goes off to get out. Okay? So all you need is two ways out of every room and a safe place for your family to meet so everybody gets together so we're sure that we're safe. And that's it, and then practice it. So again, thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, council members, and be safe out there.
Firefighter John, I have a follow-up question. I know you can't give any brands, but do you have any recommendations? We have a lot of homes that have second stories and not necessarily an easy way to get out. Are there any fire ladders that you recommend or the department recommends?
Any of the fire ladders that you can get out there, if they're UL-listed, should work. And you're right, when you're upstairs, you're not getting out, you're not jumping out a window, hopefully. So they do have fire ladders, just one little tip, since you brought it up, with the fire ladders, please open them up and look at them, if you do buy them, when you do buy them, because they're tied up like children's toys. So take a look before you need it, because otherwise you are in for a rude surprise.
Thank you very much. And that concludes our segment on proclamations. Again, we want to thank our special guests. Our next item this evening is Introduction of Staff. Deputy Clerk.
Yes, I am so excited to introduce you to Sabrina. Sabrina comes to us with experience as a clerk in two other municipalities. Oh, I'm sorry. I need to move in, sorry. I am so excited and happy to introduce Sabrina. Sabrina actually comes to us as a former clerk at two other municipalities, so she knows what she is doing, and we are so grateful to have her. And she also has worked for the county for a period of time, so we are very, very grateful to have her and her amazing experience in our department.
Welcome. Our next item on the agenda is a public hearing. This will not be voted on this evening, and that is item 22412. Do we have anyone registered to speak?
We do. First, Lena Severs.
Lena, if you could step right up here. We have five minutes for statements.
Okay.
Please welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Council, for letting me speak on my behalf tonight. My name is Lana Severs. I live and I have lived at 1522 Oshkosh Avenue for several years. I see what New looks like a block west of me, and I'd like to see that in my block. I understand that Norman Bach wants to put up a building across the street from me. I very much support what he's trying to do. I hope it encourages others to invest in my neighborhood also. He has told me an accounting office would like to be my neighbor. I prefer an accounting firm rather than a restaurant. Anyone who invests in our city should get our support. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Lena.
Margy Davey.
Margy. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Margy Davey, and I'm the Chair of the Sustainability Advisory Board for the city, and I'm here to speak to that tonight. I'm here because of the budget workshops that are coming up. The SAB has had a budget enhancement request to fund an initial year for us, a sustainability specialist.
I'm sorry, Margy, just one moment. Right now we're on the public hearing regarding Oshkosh Avenue, is this related to that?
No, it's not.
I'm sorry.
Okay, it might be the next item when we get to citizen statements. I'm sorry.
My apologies.
Is there anyone else?
Yes.
Registered on this item, the public hearing?
Eric Hyde.
Good evening, Council.
Welcome.
I live on the block where this initiative is happening. I live on the opposite end of the block. When Mr. Bach first approached us, it was a little nerve-wracking because nobody ever really wants to hear that their, their block is changing. You've gotten used to it, you know what to expect, and we sort of looked at and went, okay, well, let's at least hear him out, let's see what we have to say. And we went to the first meeting and things really weren't organized. It wasn't planned out like I would expect a good meeting to be. The architect that was supposed to be on hand did not show up. The diagram that was shown to us later found out will not meet Oshkosh code as it currently stands unless the entire block is rezoned. We all attended the Planning Commission meeting, and the Planning Commission brought up a great point that piecemeal doesn't really suit Oshkosh. We shouldn't be doing it on a lot by lot basis. We need to be looking at this on a block by block basis. All of us on the south side of, or Oshkosh Ave, are against this. We've talked together, there's a group of seven or eight of us, we all own places here. There are parks, there are kids, there's a lot of like family-friendly stuff going on here. Now, are those houses on the corner reaching the end of life? Yes, you know, we can't deny that. Those houses were built in the late 1800s, but an accounting firm, it doesn't seem like it fits well, especially when we have so many open office spaces here in Oshkosh. Now, if Oshkosh City Council decides to come later and say, hey, let's do a block revision, I think you'd probably get most of the block to go, okay, let's take a look at this as a whole. But on a piece by piece basis, it just doesn't fit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stuart Strunsey.
That's his last name, Strunsey, but he's been called worse, trust me.
My apologies.
Stu Strunsey, we own some houses on the north side there, and the City of Oshkosh has remodeled the whole gateway coming into Oshkosh, it looks beautiful. If we got a citizen that wants to use his own money to, you know, make it look better, and progress is coming, and it's all going to be redone sooner or later anyway, so it's already started on, that would be the west side, moving east, I'm all for it, and anytime we have a taxpayer that's willing to use his own money and it helps our tax base, I'm for it.
I'm sorry, Mr. Strunsey, I didn't catch your address.
I live at 945 Nicolay, but we own the property across the street on Oshkosh Ave.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Norman R. Bach.
Hello, I'm Norman Bach, and I live at 2242 Whiteswan Drive in Oshkosh. I've been improving properties in the Oshkosh area for over 50 years. At one time, I owned 50 properties in Oshkosh. I've been asked to provide an office space for some current tenants. They've approved the site on Oshkosh Ave, and I know the study done for the city was to improve the corridor on Oshkosh Ave. The building I would like to put up would improve the neighborhood, increase the tax base. Right now, the taxes are based on about $150,000 for that corner. It would be $1,500,000 if this building is complete. That's about a 10-time increase for the City of Oshkosh. By committing that amount of money, it would only enhance the neighborhood. Right now in Oshkosh Ave, there are only two properties that are above average in appearance. I'm sure the city would approve, appreciate someone investing money to improve one of the major thoroughfares into the City of Oshkosh. Oshkosh Ave is a major road to the university and also providing a road for the Oshkosh Corp headquarters. To satisfy the neighbors, we tried to buy a lot in the area of Casey's Gas Station, but none were available. At the planning and zoning meeting, Dorothy Prop suggested we go at the east end of Oshkosh Ave and develop that first. It just happens I don't own any property on the east end of Oshkosh Ave. It's just a matter of time, where do you start first? I've had several people from Oshkosh support my effort, and only the people south of Oshkosh Ave thought it would destroy their neighborhood. I'm for making things better, not for making things worse. By providing this step to enhance Oshkosh Ave, maybe more people will try to reverse the years of decay you can see along the street. Many people were opposed to Oshkosh Corp building their office on this side of town, but now you see the beautiful building and everyone is proud of it. I hope to do something, but only on a much smaller scale. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's everyone for this item.
All right, again, we will not be voting on this item tonight, and I want to thank everyone that came to speak on this. This will come back to council October 25th, right?
Correct.
For a vote. So thank you. Now we will move on to citizen statements to council. And we have a five-minute limit on that, and now we can call up Margy Davey.
Hi, everybody. I'm still Margy, and I'm still the Chair of the Sustainability Board, which is why I'm here tonight. I'm here because of the budget workshops that you have coming up. SAB has a budget enhancement request to fund one year of an initial sustainability specialist or manager or director or resiliency officer, or whatever you want to call it. I don't care what you call it, just make it happen. Reminder that sustainability has three legs to stand on, and a three-legged stool has to have all three legs for, to not tip over. The three legs are environment, economy, and social justice. Please note that economy in this sentence can also mean budget, and a sustainable budget is a cost-saving tool for everybody, while also providing social justice and protecting the environment, which makes it sustainable. Since the SAB was established 15 years ago, well, it seems like a long time ago, that means that Mr. Roloff has been with us for 15 years also.
14.
Only 14?
You've got a year on me, Margy.
Do I really? Oh, wow. And here I remembered him at one of our first meetings. Volunteer board members have provided more than 2,000 hours of time to move the city into a more sustainable and resilient spot, and it hasn't been happening. So we need more. The Common Council and the City of Oshkosh have been very supportive of the Sustainability Board, but there are ebbs and flows based on who's sitting on the council, based on what the current budget is, all kinds of things, and I get that. But we need a person to be a change agent, to accelerate and showcase what's possible as far as the integration of sustainability policy and action within the city. They can manage communications and create cohesion between departments, boards, committees, commissions, staff, and citizens. They can serve as a resource to all city entities, and they can do what's needed for grant applications to fund sustainable initiatives, including their position. So keep that in mind when you're thinking about this. One-year seed money, that's what we're asking. The four liaison hours that the SAB is allowed per week just isn't enough to move the city forward. Every year, for example, we are missing out on a ton of grant money. There's the Public Service Commission's Energy Innovation Grant. It awarded 46 grants in 2021, ranging from $26,000 to over $1 million. The City of Edgerton, with a population of 6,000, got $96,000, and that's only one little example. This is what we're missing out on. With funding now targeted for sustainable projects like climate change mitigation, reliance, equity, EV charging stations, weatherization, clean drinking water, high-speed internet, you guys know all these things, right? And remediation to get the lead out by the state and local, state and federal governments, we really need to be ready to apply for these funding opportunities, and we need to be ready now. Now's the moment, and I urge you to find the funds for an initial year, hire the right person, and that position will not only pay for itself, it will provide lots of additional funding for the city in so many areas, and provide opportunities that we are now missing out on. So that's my request. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Patricia Deener. Could you please provide your address for us?
My name is Patricia Deener, I live at 1316 Broad, and I am addressing everything to you people. You are the council. You need to hear what I You need to hear what I have to say and my husband has to say. I'm going to be doing the talk. Okay. Well, we put up a fence. We put up a trellis. We got papers saying it had been taken down, numbered, reversed, vacuumed. We had two people, gentlemen, come out to our home. Allington, Davis.
Can you come up to the mic a little bit?
Allington, Davis, and Brandon. Okay. Well, kept getting letters, kept getting letters, kept getting letters. Well, Allington retired. So what do you do? It's my work, my husband's work, and Brandon's work. You can't bring him anymore. So you hired two new people. Okay. We weren't aware of the cyclone fence being discontinued. We were planning on putting up all the fence. Well, we get the letter saying, well, the trellis has got to come down, like you said. We got to cut the four by fours. You people don't realize what I have gone through for the two and a half years taking care of a veteran. And it's sad. Even if we were in the wrong, we can't go to court. Because you know why? We don't have no justice. When you bring in attorney and he comes and be a judge, where do you go? So I said to Russ, I'm going to get the city attorney involved. And I'm going to tell you, his name is Dave, and I got John Pettek in the middle of it all. But you know what? It took a lot of frustration. We're not happy. But you know what? We stand up with the mounds. We supervise them. They got their fence. There are other fences that need to be taken care of. And it's not Deeners now, it's taking over what needs to be done. When I went to the appeal boards, you guys had to have a system because of COVID. The system was no good at all. Todd tried to represent me for the planning. I don't have no ties with planning, with Todd at all. He does his job and that's what I expect. Okay, when I go to appeal board, I don't even remember everybody on the board. The first thing I heard was, I know you, your name's Patty Deener. You know what? I came to the appeal board to get some work done, to do what I needed to do so I could keep what I wanted. I paid all this money and where did I get? Nowhere. So I went out yesterday with my husband and he cut all them posts down. And you know what? Tomorrow, he's going for a big procedure. And I'll tell you, you need to have things in writing, not verbal. You bring people from the city on your property, it's not going to work that way anymore. I've heard from the city already now, they're going to be limited. They're going to be limited to the road or the sidewalk. Because there is no justice anymore. There's not. I have improved two homes, my husband and I, and we had people come. We invested money in this economy. And where did we go? You know what? Between the city of Oshkosh and the police department, they are pushing us out and it's wrong. It's wrong to do it. And I don't mean to point at you people, but you know what? You guys don't realize what I've gone through. And thank God, we have a veteran hospital in Milwaukee that does what he does for my husband. And I will do what I have to do. And if it becomes that he has to be evaluated up for more, I'm going to take it. Because we have worked in our life. And I'll tell you, when I have a private meeting, just like you guys go into closed meetings, when I'm talking to Dan or Dave in a meeting, you need to have respect. You do not open a door. You knock. I don't care if you're called to another meeting. It's wrong. And I'm firm and I mean it. Because if I would do that to you people, what would happen? You would ask me to leave. And that's all I have to say. And I did what I needed to do. And I'm going to try to go on. But you guys need to listen. Because you are making ordinance, they're not being enforced, it's only Deeners getting picked on, and it's wrong. And I have put up with 30 years of it, and I'm not doing it no more. My doctor told me I don't have to put up with it anymore. So you guys better listen because it's true. And I'm going to have a meeting with the chief and the captain, and I'm going to call in another officer. Because you know what? It's not going to be two sides to two sides, it's going to be three sides to two. And I'm going to tell you, Mrs. Paul Mary, I've been in your neighborhood. I've been in your neighborhood for six weeks. You've seen me, your husband's seen me. You realize, and I know you realize, there's trouble all over. There's a lot going on. And you know what? I've seen these people through the years growing up. They're not happy. Certain people can do what they want, just like speeding. What we were saying about pedestrians, what about, they're supposed to enforce for speeding, they're supposed to do this. Hey, come on, what happened? My generation, when I was 18 or 19 or 20, they had to enforce, they had to do their quota, they had to do their stuff. Now we're up at where to go, what to do. And I thank you and I want you guys to listen.
Thank you, Patricia.
That's all for this item.
All right. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion and a second on consent?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on consent? I just have one question on item number six. Resolution 22415 about approving the operating budget amendment to purchase replacement firefighting foam for the Oshkosh Fire Department. Chief, what happens to the old firefighting foam? It's my understanding the DNR is taking care of that cost and that removal, is that right?
That is correct. That the DNR was allocated $1 million statewide to take up that foam. And we're currently working through, Winnebago County Emergency Management is setting up a collection site for the entire county. Spoke with them today. Hopefully that'll be nailed down here in the next week or so. So we'll take it to the collection site. The DNR put out an RFP, it's North Shore, is the company that secured that RFP, they'll take it and dispose of it.
Thank you very much. I guess, you know, for folks who are watching at home, the concern there is the PFAS contamination. So we're grateful that the DNR is taking care of that very costly item. Any other discussion on agenda? All right, please call the roll.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojahowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
We'll move on to new ordinances and there is one tonight. Ordinance 22422. Again, this item will not be voted on tonight, it will come back on the 25th. This is regarding amending section 17-33E and 17-44 and creating section 17-44.1 and 17-44.2 of the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code pertaining to weed cutting and lawn care and native landscaping areas. Sustainability Advisory Board recommends approval. Let's see here, I know we're not voting on this tonight.
I can try.
Okay. City Attorney, yeah, just, could we just have a brief summary of, it sounds like we're putting together.
We did have some provisions about weeds and weed control in our ordinances. They were pretty fairly out of date. So the Sustainability Board started looking at this. They also worked with the Parks Department and our office and I believe Public Works. And I gave you enough time to get up here. So we updated basically all of the, it was the nuisance ordinances primarily to address the issues, bring them up to date, and Mark will take it from here.
Yes. So there's kind of two pieces to this amendment. So this started back in 2019 with a student presentation through the Sustainability Advisory Board about looking at native planting areas and how to encourage, promote them within your community and also protect them and clearly make them distinct from weeds, lawn grass, making sure they're protected so they're not under those same criteria as weeds and lawn grass that need to be cut, those noxious weed things. As we started looking at this, the Attorney's Office helped. We found that there were a number of issues in our current noxious weed ordinance that needed to be brought up to speed to meet state code. And then as well as better define what we're calling now native landscaping areas to make them a distinct, separate use of the noxious weeds. And this now provides the clear definition of how those are different from each other as well as the process to get approved to do a native planting area on private property.
So one question that came up, sorry to catch things off guard here, but it was today, is do we allow the native planting areas to be in the terrace?
So this does not allow that. This is simply on private property. This section of the code governs those who want to do it under private residence.
I see, okay. All right. Well, so then, any chance you want to throw an example of a contrast between a noxious weed and a native plant that might somehow look similar?
I won't because I don't know the difference. This does rely on the Parks Department who has a little more expertise in that as well as better points you to the state law where the state law defines what noxious weeds are. But I'm going to leave making that distinction to the people that are better at doing it than I.
All right, thank you. All right, we will now move to pending ordinances. 14, that's ordinance 22423 designate bike lanes re-stripe with road diet. South Main Street, both sides, from South Park Avenue to Waka Avenue, traffic and bike and pedestrian advisory boards recommend approval. Do anyone register to speak on this item?
We do not.
All right, take a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
All right, please call the roll.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojahowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
All right, we'll now move to ordinance 22424. Amend sections 2-7 and 2-8 of the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code pertaining to elections. This did come to council previously and reviewed. Can we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Seeing as how we have something like 28 days away, City Clerk, could you just, again, just give a brief summary of what we're doing here with this?
Sure. So this just updates the ordinance to allow us, just like statute, to go down to as low as five poll workers at each location. There's no intention to do that, that is just to match state statute so that if something happened, we could do that. It also recognizes that we pay the poll workers and allows us to have varying shifts at the different locations because from 6:00 AM until 11:00 PM is a very long day for our poll workers.
And as I understand it, there are still opportunities for folks to apply for part-time poll working, is that right?
Always, always. You can apply to be a poll worker, please do. I have made the assignments for the upcoming election. Thank you to everyone who signed up to be a poll worker, very grateful for that. But there are always elections coming up. So please, if you are interested, give us a call.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojahowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
All right, item number 16, ordinance 22425. Approve zone change from suburban mixed-use district SMU to suburban mixed-use district with a plan development overlay. SMUPD for a property located at 2101 West 9th Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this zone change? Please call the roll.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojahowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Our next section is on new resolutions. Resolution 22426. Approve general development plan for a commercial development at 2101 West 9th Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval. Do we have anyone registered?
No.
All right, motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojahowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Our next item, 18, is resolution 22-427. Authorized purchase of 211 High Avenue, $139,900. I believe we have someone registered to speak.
Lou Shear?
Hi, Lou, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My home address is actually 501 Bittersweet Lane in Wapon, but I'm here to represent Avocap who has an office at 2929 Harrison Street here in town. I am the Homeless Prevention Services Director at Avocap and have worked for them for over 28 years. I'm using this address as an example and giving you some food for thought of maybe some alternative ideas that we need to start considering as a whole. Homelessness has increased by 300% in the past two years. That's a staggering number. We're finding that investors have purchased over 500 units that were rental properties owned by other people. And with those 500 units, they chose not to renew 30% of those tenancies as well as increasing the rents anywhere from 20% to 40%. What it's doing is changing the face of what is affordable housing and for the people the most vulnerable we're serving. So the increase of homelessness is primarily due to the fact that people cannot find affordable housing. This particular unit, well, Avocap is almost $1.3 million of assistance and rental assistance and case management that we bring to your communities. And we're having a very difficult time spending that money because we cannot find landlords who are willing to rent to people at fair market rent or below, that includes utilities. So this particular building is in fact charging fair market rents and actually a little bit below. Fair market rent for a one-bedroom unit now in Oshkosh is $689. I am acutely aware and recognize the balance needed between affordable housing and safe decent housing for people. And I'm asking that the city give some strong consideration for a plan to how to replace affordable units when you find it necessary to take them for other purposes. I don't know the intent, I don't know that you're going to purchase it and tear it down, but we do have four people who are living there who are paying what they consider affordable rent. Avocap was engaged in the tiny house village, and so we know that the city has the vision to be able to think outside the box and do innovative things. And I'm asking you to reconsider creative ways to address your empty lots currently and how to identify the need for safe decent and affordable housing to make it happen. And when we describe what affordable, truly affordable housing is, it's where people are paying 30% of their income towards rent, and that does include utilities. And we're finding that more than 50% of the people in Oshkosh, and unfortunately, most of our area, are paring more than 50% of their income towards housing costs. So it's a plea for you to think outside the box again and look at ways to, if you're going to take housing going to take housing off of the market, to replace it with something that else that people can consider affordable. It's a challenge, that's for sure. I've not been successful at coming up with the only idea, but I think we've got some great people and some great minds that work towards that. Whatever you decide to do with the building, you're going to decide to do with the building, but I don't know what I'm going to do with more and more homeless people who can't find affordable housing in your communities. Thank you for that consideration.
Thank you, Lou. Is there anyone else registered for this item?
No.
All right, back to council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, I just, if you don't mind, Director Knifeorth coming, and just, can you address the tenants' situation? My understanding is there's no intent to kick anyone out of their, but please let us know.
That is correct. We had told the broker who is representing the owner that we would work with them to ensure that the tenants have ample time to find new housing. Currently, three of the four units are rented out. There's one that's a month-by-month rent, there's another one that ends in June of 2023, and then there's another one that ends in March of 2023, and then obviously, the other unit is vacant. So we would certainly work with the owner to be flexible with the closing date to ensure that they find housing.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. So I want to be clear to everybody, and Kelly, I need you to be clear too, please. We have zero intention of displacing these people, is that accurate?
I mean, the intention is for, to give them time to find new housing. I totally agree with what Lou had to just say. We need to find, you know, more housing. We, our housing study did identify that. I think we're doing a good job with working with developers that are doing low-income housing and offering incentives to help push those projects forward, but we know that there is more that needs to be done, so.
So we're not kicking them out next week?
Correct.
I think is what, okay, thank you.
Could you just talk about some of the short and long-term plans for the site?
Sure.
Just for the public to know.
Yeah, you know, this area is in our central city, and it is part of our Imagine Oshkosh Plan, which the city did as kind of a follow-up to the Downtown Action Plan, which was completed in 2000 and was largely implemented. So the Imagine Oshkosh Plan does identify this block in this area as a redevelopment opportunity site. So as we, you know, look forward to implementing the Imagine Oshkosh Plan, we will, you know, look at the different areas that the plan identified, you know, that we should focus our redevelopment efforts on, and we would, you know, with the opportunities arise, you know, we would at least bring it to the council's attention, to make sure that they are aware of the opportunities, and let you decide if it's something that you would like to pursue or not. Short term, the city would need to, or RDA would need to acquire more parcels in the area to create a developable area that would be large enough for new development. So we would most likely, once the tenants would find housing, demolish the property and just restore it to grass for the time being, until we can land bank more properties in the area.
Ms. Knifeorth, a couple of questions. Thank you for sending out a really detailed follow-up as to why it came to council after the redevelopment authority declined to purchase. In the memo where you're talking about not having had the opportunity, the department not having had the opportunity to inspect the property.
Mm-hmm.
If the property hasn't been inspected, and I understand there's like a long history from like the late 1990s into the early 2000s of code violations, have those been addressed? And if we haven't had an opportunity to have that inspection, how do we know that it needs to be demolished? Could it potentially be moved and relocated, or a couple of vacant lots within a few blocks of that?
Sure. Well, the building was built in 1920, so moving it, you know, we would have to look if it was structurally sound to be able to be moved. And I did mention there are violations from a variety of minimum housing, you know, some building code violations, some zoning code violations, and then I did mention that in the past couple of years, it was commercial, but that it was changed from commercial to now there is a tenant living in there, in that commercial area. So from a city standpoint, we know that that probably is a violation. So as far as determining if it would be able to be saved, or, you know, and maybe moved, that's something that the city, if we would be able to get inside and have to hire a structural engineer to see if it would be worth, you know, encumbering those costs to move it to a different location.
So this property has been, has changed hands several times. And, you know, just a few short years ago, it was like $52,000, then sold in like 2017, I think for like $105,000, and then more recently, I think 2019, like somewhere in that area. And there, so the question is, have those code violations never been addressed or corrected or corresponded about since 2007, that they're still existing? Because I couldn't find anything in the inspection records that showed any follow-up, and, you know, are we setting an example that you can not take care of your properties and earn significant profits from not taking care of those properties? And then the second part to that is, once it would be demolished, if our assessed value is showing 18,000 just for the land, without a building on it, how do we get to the projection of 154,000 of assessed value if there's not going to be a building on there? I guess, help me understand that.
Sure. To go first, to your question about the violations, you mentioned that it has changed hands in the past couple of years. If you look closely, those are just, I think, within the same person, but maybe they switch it to a different business entity. So I think the last actual real sale that was an arm length sale was $105,000. But as far as the violations go, some of them have been corrected, but there haven't, some have not been. So, you know, that is, unfortunately, sometimes, you know, when we try to work with property owners, if they are not willing, it just depends if the city has enough evidence and to go forward with, you know, having them, you know, make those corrections in order to make the building code compliant. So I can't answer exactly every single one.
Sure.
And like I said, I think it's a mixed bag between some have been corrected and some haven't. As far as your question with, if we take the building down, now we have just land left. That's actually something we discuss a lot with RDA, because in many situations, we're buying the land and the building has to go. So unfortunately, that is part of the equation that we have to just deal with, and sometimes the land is just more valuable than the building that may be on it. The assessor may say otherwise, but, you know, for us, they're looking for, towards the future and want to see this be a redevelopment area, you know, we have to take that cost and unfortunately just include that into our analysis when deciding if we should pursue the property or not.
And it's my understanding, there are four units, and after talking with one of the tenants, there are actually eight inhabitants there, including a child. Rents are less than $700, four units, one unoccupied. Where would they go while we're working on the incentives to build more low-income, very low-income affordable units? And can we, at the very least, do a contingency, and this may be a question for legal, a contingency in the offer, that a portion of the proceeds go to those tenants for relocation? Because where are they going to go?
We are not using CDBG funds, so we're not required, so I think that would be to the discretion of council.
Councilmember Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to caution everybody on going down that path. Every piece of property that we purchase, that sets a precedence, that that's now become our policy, and I think that's a pretty slippery slope. I understand, Laurie, you don't want to buy this property, I get it, but pigeonholing this council into any future endeavors like that could be very dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Miller. So our strategic plan, the new one that we are going to review later this evening in sections B3, C4, D2 through 4, under Strengthening Neighborhoods, I think addresses some of this, and this is a really difficult thing. It was difficult for RDA, it'll be difficult for council, because on the one hand, we are investing heavily in both time and resources to address the homelessness issue, and a variety and diversity of housing stock. But on the other hand, we will be displacing up to eight people, eventually. And I guess I would just caution us to look at when we think we're fixing one thing, are we breaking something else? And the other question is, when a house comes down, right now, the taxes are like $27,000, $2800 a year, presumably, if it were to increase, and we were able to retain the property, rehab it, and re-home folks in that, wouldn't that stay on the tax rolls? And otherwise, if we demo it, we lose for potentially 20 years, I think is, you know, just kind of a benchmark that was thrown into the memo. It could be as much as that before we see actual, like, replacements.
That's correct. Some of our redevelopment efforts have taken from less than a year, and we've gotten lucky, and there's been a drive and a movement to redevelop in a certain area, up to 20 years, as we're seeing in the T-Wall area, Marion Road, sometimes it just takes time. So yes, you are correct, it could vary, it could be off the tax roll for a wide range of time.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For years, I've questioned some of our seemingly scatter shot property acquisitions, whether they were blighted or not. I don't have that concern with this one. This is a targeted acquisition in an area that is ripe for some redevelopment. It's shown in several of our plans, and I'm thankful that staff, even though RDA declined, that staff brought this to us for our consideration. I think this is, this is the right first move in that space, and allows us maybe to start acquisitions of other properties in that, in that space, to help with further development. And that further development, if we look back at just very recent past history, those developments are all commercial mixed-use, or, excuse me, mixed-use, commercial and residential, that seemingly are going up. No promises, but that's the tendency for development in this community and regionally, that there needs to be a balance when those redevelopment efforts are occurring. So while in the short term, we may lose a few units, in the long term, I do believe that that will be gaining units by acquiring property within this space and being able to, to help launch the next redevelopment in the central city.
Councilmember Erickson?
Thanks. I'll say, I'm, I have been torn on this one. I don't deny that this is a block in a site that's ripe for redevelopment. And also, I think we have to be very intentional about our goals to develop more affordable units. When we remove affordable units from our community, we have to be intentional about replacing them in some way. So I do have concerns about displacing tenants, removing affordable units from our community by doing this, but my hope is that if, if and when this is redeveloped, that we can be very explicit about what type of housing we're adding to our community, what affordability we're adding. And I think we're caught between two, you know, a rock and a hard place with this one. Either we purchase the building and give, luckily give tenants the time they need to find other housing, but in this market, that's going to be very difficult for them. Or we don't, and potentially another buyer will come in and may not be able to get the units up to code, may not be quality housing for folks, their rents may go up, but they still have housing. So I, yeah, this is a tough one.
Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, I'll just say, say real quick, I mean, one of the common things I've heard at Plan Commission, so the years, even before I was at council, that we don't have vision, or we don't look, we don't look to the future in our, in our developments. I really do appreciate the fact that Director Knifeorth is being opportunistic and being aggressive here, recognizing that there is potential at that site, even if that potential is not here today, and I think we can recognize that there's a balancing act. We don't have to have, you know, redevelopment and increasing our tax base be the enemy of addressing the very real social needs in our community, and I would argue it's on us to reiterate the goals that we set forth for the city manager, to address the issue of people experiencing homelessness in our community. I know we've made progress on that, and I think that we can move to a next phase in that progress of having organizations work together, maybe the city play a coordinating role, and that's, that's a broader discussion that we need to have, but I don't think that needs to be across purposes of this. So I'm certainly reassured by your commitment to not evicting these people, right? That'd certainly be a different story if we're just getting into the business of, you know, light removal and kicking people out of their homes, but that's not what this is. So I'm happy to support it.
Just a follow-up question, then. How long do you anticipate it being before closing on this property? And if those leases are, one is month-to-month, and the others are March and June?
Correct.
What would be the expectation for that closing, and what ample amount of time would that be?
Sure. We would work with the owner to see what's in their lease, as far as, you know, the notification that they have to give to their tenants. But I envision that, you know, they would let their tenants know that they will not be renewing the leases, especially for the folks in June of '23 and March of '23, to give them, you know, notification that, you know, you need to look for other housing, but you could be in this location until then. So that's something that we would work with them and be flexible as far as when that closing date would be.
So then the tenant who's month-to-month, we would, even if their lease says 30 or 60 days, I mean, with month-to-month, it's usually 30.
Right.
I think under Wisconsin statute. We would go beyond that, would you say?
I mean, I would work with the owner, because if there's somebody that they said they're going to stay till June, then what's the point of, you know, having somebody else leave? But, you know, make sure that they're aware.
Sure.
That, you know, they, they do need to be out by a certain time. So that's something that we would have discussions with the owner on that.
This pool of funds that we're using, is it possible that we could allocate kind of a, kind of like what they did after the foreclosure, you know, in the recession, the kind of cash for keys, if you will? Are there funds from some of our other programming that could assist with that? Because otherwise, they're going to be going over to Avocap for Wisconsin Emergency Rental Assistance as soon as they get that notice.
Well, our CDBG does provide some funding to Avocap to help with those types of things. I know that there's state funds also, but as far as the funds that we're using to acquire, those are scattered sites, and that's CIP funds that you borrow. So it's not federal funds, so there is some flexibility, I believe, how you choose to use it. We borrow it for acquisition and costs associated with acquisition.
Okay. Councilmember Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. Kelly, I'm going to put you in a pickle, and I always promised not to do this to staff, because I didn't preface this earlier, but we talk about our growth of our homelessness. We talk about that there is a lack of low-income housing.
Low-low income.
Low-low income housing, thank you. So how many units have we added to low-income housing? And the percentage-wise, it's just a guess, and if you don't want to answer, please don't. I mean, I wish I had the stats in front of me, but I want to point out to everybody that the last 10-year census, this city has grown less than 1%. I think, what was it, 80 people? So our homeless population, I think, Lou, you said 300% growth. So there are bigger issues here at play. Nobody up here wants anybody to be homeless, nobody up here wants to displace these people, but it's a tough job. We have to buy this property if we want to make this a healthy neighborhood. I mean, everybody knows the block, everybody knows the blights that are there, but I don't want this being painted as we're putting these people out on the street. We are. We are absolutely not. Lou said you got dollars that you can't even give away, and you know I support you guys with all my heart. So I just don't want this getting painted whatsoever, and I mean simply whatsoever, as us putting these people out. Every effort will be made to put these people in homes, in apartments, whatever it takes. So all the resources are there. But again, we're adding low income housing. We need to add more low, low income housing. That's not a secret. This council is 100% dedicated to that. So I don't want to use this one little property as a line in the sand or anything. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I certainly appreciate that. So we referenced the vision or Imagine Oshkosh Plan under redevelopment priority site H. And as Councilmember Miller, you know, said, you know, we're 100% behind providing a variety of housing. If we were to go with implementation of this, the description in this plan, I would hope that we would be revisiting this seven-year-old document because things have changed drastically in the last seven years, and that data was even older than seven years. But this references, based upon existing market demand at that time, residential development should be mid to high-range rental product. This could support some affordable units. And I guess that kind of comes back to, as Councilmember Miller brought up, you know, affordable for what income range?
Right.
While we talk about affordable housing being something that is within the 30% of your income range, you know, very recently, we're looking at, you know, almost 9% inflation rate for basic things like groceries, gas, utilities and that. If we're 100% behind making sure that folks get a roof over their head here, what would be the plan for updating the plan, I guess, to encompass that?
Absolutely. That's something we're actually going to be talking about later on on the agenda today. We're going to be working with Houssilovina again to, with some community partners to really focus on the central city north of the Fox River. Much like we, you know, created that really exciting visualization for the Sawdust District and looked at kind of some key development areas in the Sawdust District, we want to do the same with the north of the Fox River in this area of the city. So we will definitely be looking at those, that data to see what could be updated. But really, I, you know, I, we are happy to work with council to identify affordable options for housing, but do know it is going to take more subsidies. We're probably going to work with community partners. If you look at COTS day by day and even tiny homes, I mean, all of the partners and the collaboration that happened with that, I mean, that's the sort of, you know, work that would have to go in to create more of these units. And we are more than happy to participate in that and try to facilitate that in different areas of the city. I think we have some funding, you know, that we could look at. We're trying to get somewhat creative with the funding we do have, including CDBG funding. We're having conversations with NeighborWorks out of the Green Bay office to try to work with them to create more affordable housing in the city. And then, like we had mentioned with our zoning code, we're looking at ways to add more affordable options for folks within our zoning code so they can do more with the property that they have. So I think you're right. It's a bigger discussion that we can have, just like Councilor Miller said too, but I think it's something that, you know, we could all work on together to find more of those opportunities.
I appreciate all the detail and I appreciate council's patience with this topic because it's kind of a symptom of the disease. It's not just this one house. In the last year, over 25 homes in the city in the affordable category for very low, or less than 60% AMI affordable category have been raised. The city didn't necessarily remove all of those. You know, there are very valued organizations and assets in the community. Our school district has had to do that for growth. Our Boys and Girls Club has had to take down, I think, a dozen for growth and serving that population. We do have many properties in the city that are off the tax rolls where we have, the city has taken these homes down, but we're not keeping pace with replacing those affordable for the very low. So again, I appreciate council's patience with this, and we'll go ahead and call the roll. Hansen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
No.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
No.
Curried five, two.
All right. Thank you. Resolution 22-428, approve 2023 and 20, uh, to 2024 strategic plan.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on strategic plan. Deputy Mayor.
Not really a discussion, just want to trust my appreciation to staff, city manager, rolloff's office and the HR team and everyone department level on down to, for all the efforts that they put into this, it's not a simple and easy process. I like that staff and supervisor level and others are involved in this process. It really helps with the buy-in and making sure that the leaders of this, of our government here know where we're trying to go and the path that we're trying to take to get there. And so just a thank you for all the effort in compiling this and putting together and just a good work, good working document for us to move forward.
A question on the, there are a couple of items on strategic plan that reference that I see. Mr. Fodik is here from GOHNI. It looks like we've kind of placed some heavy lifting on GOHNI and also exploring some items, I think with NeighborWorks Green Bay was mentioned too. Just, I guess, Ms. Nyforth, are you able to use that mic back there or do I need to have you come back up? Okay, sorry.
I'm going to come up.
So I appreciate all of the council also for all the work that was done on this and the department heads, staff too. But Ms. Nyforth, it looks like we do have some pretty hefty plans for GOHNI to play a role in this. Is GOHNI at a point where they've been apprised and participated and ready to take on that role like us? Have they seen this document?
Tom and I do have regular communication, and these are some ideas that we actually talked about before it was even discussed in the strategic plan. So I think we are in agreement with what, you know, is in the plan and what we believe that their organization could do with city support. So that's something that I know that.
Sure.
We have talked about before, and I think we all believe that, you know, GOHNI does a great job. And, you know, we're going to talk about another neighborhood association tonight, which is really exciting. But I think that the plans and the tasks that we have in here are really going to elevate the neighborhood associations that we already have, bringing some that may be a little inactive into maybe a more active, you know, status. And then, you know, training, you know, people to maybe, so leadership could be switched or there could be more people working on, you know, the tasks and the plans that the neighborhoods have, just to kind of share the, share, you know, the work that goes into it. So we also really want to start working with GOHNI and marketing our city programs we have for our housing programs, such as rehab and curb appeal and different ways to improve the homes. And then also part of it is we really want to work with them to get messaging out about some of the changes in our zoning code with more things you can do with your property if you want to add that ADU or, you know, do something with the garage. We want to use them as a vehicle to get that information out to the neighborhoods because they are definitely our boots-on-the-ground people that have the ear and the respect of the neighborhoods in the city.
So I guess just following up, thank you so much for that. So the reference to working with another entity, the NeighborWorks, we'll call it 2.0 with Green Bay, right?
Yes.
I think I'm the only person left on the council who was here during that time.
I think you are, yeah.
But are they on board? I know there was some exploration discussions going on, but are they maybe in a position to work on some of the things that they have more of a strength than where GOHNI, not to compare them, but different strengths? Are we seeing positive movement with them? And perhaps this kind of comes back to the earlier discussion about some rehabilitation of some distressed or salvageable homes.
Right. You are correct. We actually did have a meeting with NeighborWorks and GOHNI staff to talk about the roles that each of them could play in development here in the city. So NeighborWorks is really going to focus on that rehab and new construction in our community, but they will be working with GOHNI to identify, if it's not contractors or opportunity sites or different things like that. So I think the communication really will be there and the collaboration to work together on improving, obviously, just the neighborhood activities and the togetherness and then, of course, just the condition of the housing in the areas.
Great. Thank you. And I guess I just have one other item, and that is, so we had a speaker here earlier tonight making a request for the budget for an enhancement or an addition for a one-year sustainability specialist, I believe. There are probably at least a dozen items in our strategic plan that relate to sustainability or resiliency and things under that category. Not to get into the how we would do, the what's here, but just kind of wondering about, you know, how we as a community, as a council, can envision this strategic plan embracing and approaching some of those items.
I think that you are correct. We kind of have a mixture of sustainability, and I know we have some things in there about, you know, environmental justice, and there are definitely some reoccurring themes in here. I think that there is a lot that they could work on, just based on all of the plans we have, if it's not sustainability or even DEI and our, you know, the different redevelopment plans and the housing plans that we had, and just to kind of be that liaison, you know, if it's not between the public and city staff or between the different departments and other agencies to try to, you know, try to put the puzzle pieces together to do more in the city. And, you know, Margie was right, there are a lot of grants out there right now, especially right now. So I think that it's definitely, you know, worth taking a look at to see if there would be an opportunity for staffing to help with this because I think we have a lot of things we could do here in the city or in the county, in the region.
Thank you so much. Again, thank you to council and staff for the many hours that went into this. Staff more hours than our full day. And we will call the roll on 22-428, the strategic plan.
Hansen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Curried seven.
All right. Next, we are going to move on to a special new resolution. This resolution is in recognition of Kurt Witenski and Gail Sumi for their service with the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. And this was brought by our city manager. City manager, would you like to talk about this resolution and that recognition?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Hopefully Kurt and Gail are not watching the council meeting here tonight, but there are council meetings throughout the state in which councils are adopting resolutions of recognition for Mr. Witenski and Ms. Sumi's 43 years of combined service to the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. This, a stack of these resolutions from throughout the state will be presented to them at the next week's annual league conference to thank them for their service. So Mr. DeShane, the executive director of the league, has asked municipalities throughout the state to do this. So I'm guessing there'll probably be about 400 or 500 of these, give or take. So it's just, will be one page in a very large book, but I think it'll be very meaningful.
All right, council, can we have a motion in a second for 22-429?
So moved.
Second.
Just any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Hansen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Curried seven.
All right. Next, our council discussion direction, city manager, future agenda items. Do council members have any requests for future agenda items at this time? All right. We have future meetings, joint meeting with the Oshkosh Area School District Board and the Oshkosh City Council on Thursday, October 27th at 5:00 PM at the School District Administration Office. And our future budget workshops, the public is invited to, October 17 and 18, view that on Oshkosh Media, or you may attend. This is a workshop for information from the departments to come to council. And then another potential budget workshop, and then public hearing on November 2nd, I'm sorry, after the public hearing on November 2nd at City Hall at 5:00 PM. And we're at discussion of virtual meetings report. City manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Staff put together a report based on council discussion and some other inquiries about possibly moving to virtual or hybrid type of meetings for boards and commissions. Staff has provided this report. Our recommendation is that the in-person method remains the most effective method because of best experience for participants as well as the best product for viewers. I know you've seen some other governmental entities and, you know, through COVID, we did a lot of virtual meetings when things were very difficult. While we can make it work, and I have, you know, great confidence in staff being able to give you the best virtual product, it is still not nearly as close for the experience that an in-person meeting has. I think council wanted us to look at those things. Mr. Tim, who is hiding behind the desk back there, he's certainly happy to answer questions. But Jake and the folks in Oshkosh Media took a look at that chart that says board and commission meeting considerations and, you know, took a look at these factors. Hybrid meetings, we do not recommend at all because they just, it just creates too much confusion. I think former council member Peschel talked about when he was participating in a hybrid mode, he felt distant from his ability to constructively participate in council meetings. The challenge with even the all-virtual, I can tell you that I could produce a board or commissioner that could go on either side of this issue. It is no, I can't tell you it's not unanimous by any stretch of the imagination. There are some people who say, I really like the virtual. It gives me a better opportunity to participate perhaps remotely if somebody works and is out of town. For that perspective, they're right. On the other hand, you have people, there was one person who actually quit one of our boards and commissions because that person did not, that person got headaches from looking at the screen for an extended period of time. Also a very valid argument, so there's no perfect answer. I wish I did have that perfect answer for you, but I think there was discussion about, you know, what do we do with this? We give this to you to take a look at, give us your feedback. If you want us to do any additional digging, we will do that. We purposely did not put this as an action item because based on what kind of direction you may want to give us on this, do we make any changes? We would have to go back and take a look at our ordinances and that, and we just couldn't do that on the fly in one meeting. So I welcome any discussion that council or direction they want to give us on that.
Just a quick question. In the report, you mentioned ADA accommodations and our legal obligation. So someone who needs, who needs one of those, how do they go about that?
They, on every public notice, there is a, for example, ours, but every one of our They, on every public notice, there is a, for example, ours, but every one of our boards and commissions does have a notice to contact us. Most, I can tell you, we've had very few, if any, requests for accommodations. We do our best to make this ADA accessible, but we haven't gotten anybody who made a specific request. If they did, we would, would we consider a virtual type of option for that person? Absolutely.
And they should call your office, is that?
Yeah, yeah. And we have it on every notice, for example, on ours.
It would depend on which board or commission.
Yeah. For the council meeting, it's my office, I think. But everyone's different. If it's Plan Commission, they call Ms. Nyforth's office.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And related to that, I had a note here, question. So when we say that we allow remote participation when necessary due to extraordinary circumstances, such as an emergency, or when convenient or cost-effective for the city, such as the alternative of bringing a costly consultant or expert, or as a reasonable accommodation for persons with an ADA disability, I guess my question is, you know, does council have an appetite for adding to that a caregiver who would be caring for a person with a disability who would like to participate?
Yeah. I would think that, my thought on that matter would be that that would be a reasonable request because of that person's situation.
I think we could consider it under that same disability category.
Okay, okay. I wasn't sure.
No, that's okay. I mean, that's a great question to just get out there on the table because somebody might be watching and saying, well, I'd be on a board or commission but for that challenge that I have. And if they made that request, I'm sure you would be calling me and saying, okay, what can we do for this person? We'll figure it out.
Well, but you're absolutely right. There's this whole, I can't remember what the phrase is called, you know, for folks who are attending a hybrid meeting virtually, this kind of like othering that doesn't quite have that same level of maybe participation. But on the other end of it, there's the FOMO that bear missing out by those who would like to be there but can't but still want to participate. So it's not an even split. You know, our boards and commission chairs over the last two years have, you know, had multiple requests from both for both the virtual and staying all in person. And of course, we also have the limitations with the Oshkosh Media Services, not all of the boards and commissions are broadcast as well. So that also lends to some imbalance, I guess. Other council members on this topic? Councilmember Erickson?
Thanks. I think I'd be interested in getting some feedback on this from boards and commissions. I think that was my original intent, is hearing from some of the boards and commissions I serve on, just some of the difficulties, both on both sides, either preferring to be in person but has some limitations or would prefer a virtual option. So I don't know if that might take a lot of effort, but I'd be curious to see what the feedback is from boards and commissions.
Are we able to send out an email survey, maybe of all of our board and commission members? I think it was like 230-some.
So you're referencing councilmember Erickson's request?
I think one caution I would make also is that if you have boards and commissions that are dealing with quasi-judicial matters, property rights like Plan Commission, Police and Fire Commission has hearings, Board of Review, Board of Appeals have hearings, if you have commissions and boards that are dealing with those individual rights, the best method is for them to be in person to hear the testimony and also for the person who's presenting their case to them, for them to be face-to-face with the people who are making decisions on their property rights. So it may not be something that's completely conducive, I don't know if that's the right word, but to every, to what every board and commission does. And I think that probably should be taken into consideration as well.
So councilmember Erickson, would you be thinking about that, I guess, survey for just the advisory boards?
Yeah, I think given limitations with the other ones, I think that may make the most sense, might be most feasible.
I think Ms. Laurentson and I have had this discussion in the past about which boards are, for lack of a better term, off limits for that discussion. And it's not necessarily just the required boards. Some of those boards could, you know, possibly, because they're not quasi-judicial and things like that. So we could include them as well. It's just that the ones that she's talking about are the ones that we would, we could potentially have legal issues if we didn't afford their right to be able to face the bad terminology with jury of their peers. And I think that's kind of that.
Kind of a due process kind of consideration.
Yeah. But if council wants us to do something like that, we could certainly do that or just bring it to each of the board and commissions individually.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've asked boards and commissions at different times over the last two years to weigh in on the topic. Us ourselves, not that long ago, made the decision to go this route. The reasons laid out in the diagram, the spreadsheet, are the exact reasons that I'm confident this body voted the way it did to go back to full in-person. Unfortunately, I don't have much consideration for the convenience factor. I'm just going to be really blunt that because it's convenient, doesn't work for me. The business of the city is done generally in this building, and there's a reason for it. And just because it's convenient, doesn't work. There's too many distractions. I know other bodies, other governmental bodies do some different things. Unfortunately, I think they're opening themselves up to some massive securities concerns that aren't mitigated. And this really seemed to have came about from some discussions on certain boards and commissions and their lack of attendance and their lack of quorms. And unfortunately, I think it's a fallacy that going remote or even hybrid will increase attendance. The two aren't linked. So for all those, and just as city manager Roloff put it, the quality of the hybrid meetings is undeniably lower. There's reduced efficiency and reduced impact, us as a council even. When we've had council members sitting at home, and there are council members in this room, and we've had citizens come to speak to us, it is much more impactful being in this room when we have to sit and listen to a citizen come up here and tell us the things that they think we're doing wrong or the things that aren't going right for them. And to be sitting at home because it's convenient can definitely reduce the impact that those statements make to us, and we have to look beyond that. We have to look beyond and make sure that those boards and commissions that serve us, that advise us, are also hearing those statements and feeling that impact. And that happens in the room, unfortunately. So thank you very much.
Anyone else? All right. We are at council member announcements and statements. Any reports from council liaisons for boards and commissions? City manager? Announcements and statements of city manager?
I'd be happy to start with that because we've got a couple folks in the audience who've been hanging out this whole meeting just for this announcement. So I really appreciate that. If I'd known you were going to come, I may have tried to jostle it around. Sixth Ward Neighborhood Association is here this evening to, for me to happily announce that their association has been created, and the boundaries are there on the map shown there, pretty much south of the river, west of Oregon, and east of, all right, help me out, Paulette. East of Ohio, close enough. That's, so that's, yeah, I know, but, yeah, close enough. We don't want to forget about the people on Dakota, but we're certainly very happy with the association. We don't have many neighborhood associations south of the river, so this is very meaningful for staff because this has been a goal that I've given Ms. Nyforth and Mr. Davis before her. So I appreciate the fact that some of the neighbors came out to just show their support, to be actively involved in this. And, you know, I think Jesse thought they were there because you've got a poll worker over there, too, so.
A wonderful chair, yes.
Yeah, wonderful chair. So we're happy that there are now 23 recognized neighborhood associations within the city. And as we talked about, we want them to stay active because an active neighborhood association gives vibrancy to the neighborhood, makes it safer, and affords opportunities to make the neighborhood, improve the neighborhood, and enrich the quality of life there. So we're very happy to have them, and thanks for sticking around to the bitter end.
Just a quick question about the boundaries there. Can you throw the map back up on the screen? Looks like there's a little panhandle. And my question is, where that Wisconsin Street, well, actually, it would be Ohio, kind of meets that angle, that 45?
Pretty much it's everything south of the Public Works Garage. They didn't include us.
And that's my question because as Ms. Nyforth knows, and I don't know about the folks from the Neighborhood Association, but there was like a development proposal that was just to the east of that boundary, but then there was the potential for acquiring that old Public Works building also as kind of a, you know, partner to that housing development. And I guess my question would be, if that were to occur, would it still be orphaned off like that, or would they adjust the boundaries?
That's always up to the different neighborhood associations, but I'll let Kelly.
I think you're talking about Boatworks, and that's actually just to the east of Wisconsin.
Right.
You guys know that well.
So it's to the east.
Yeah.
Boatworks is to the east, but then they were also looking at acquiring just to the west of that, the old Public Works building as a phase two or something?
Yeah, you're thinking of the old sanitation garage.
Okay, okay.
Just west of Michigan.
Right.
Not Ohio.
Oh, okay. All right. Yes, yes. Okay, I was one street off. Thank you. Thanks for clarifying.
These folks know their neighborhood, that's for sure.
Yeah, you want to come up, Paulette?
Come on, Paulette.
I mean, it's not, it's not, every, it's not every council meeting we get to like excitedly welcome a new neighborhood association, so.
Being in the panhandle that Lori was talking about is there's another neighborhood association in that area.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the Sacred Heart District is in the blue, and then you can see the Marina District in the orange.
Right, that's it. I couldn't remember the name. So that's why we kind of took in the orphan areas into ours, and that's why we went across Ohio Street, too, because our original plan was just to end at Ohio Street, but it seemed kind of rude to not be friendly.
Yeah, and I mean, most of the time we talk about neighborhoods as, you know, being like residential and that, but, you know, speaking for my neighborhood, sometimes those commercial or retail pieces that are on the edges can be great assets for neighborhood associations.
Yeah, because we have a lot of that on Ohio and Oregon, so, you know. We counted them last summer, and I can't remember the number anymore, but it was well over 100.
Nice.
Those areas.
Yeah.
And we briefly talked about going all the way to 9th, and I started thinking about it, and I thought, do you realize that if we did that, we would probably have most of the bars on the south side in our neighborhood?
So maybe some happy neighbors, I don't know. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I have a memo in your agenda packet regarding the House Seal Levine Downtown Visualization Plan that Ms. Nyforth mentioned earlier. That's really putting meat on the bones of what you had talked about with the Imagine Oshkosh Plan. And we have a great partnership with not only the city, but the Oshkosh Convention and Visitors Bureau, the Oshkosh Area Community Foundation, Oshkosh Chamber of Commerce, and Greater Oshkosh Economic Development. They're all participating in this. I can say that part of it was initiated by the excitement that was generated with the Roger Brooks Study that was done by the CVB, but we've known for some time that we needed to put more meat on the bones and really just take, from 2001, there was a company called LDR that did a downtown action plan, and that, for the most part, was implemented. So we really do need to develop a new visualization plan to identify some of those things because as the mayor pointed out, some of those references from the Imagine Oshkosh Plan are dated already after, what did you say, seven years?
Seven years?
Yeah, after seven years. Time flies. And we certainly know a lot more based on our housing study and just different things that have happened in the downtown area. But we're excited about this. We're going to be participating to the tune of $15,000. Total cost is $60,000, so our partners are covering 75% of the cost of this project, and we're looking forward to working with them.
So is it thought that this would lead to those redevelopment plan in districts with this, I guess, part two for Imagine Oshkosh?
Yeah. This is very similar to the process that was taken on how the South Shore Redevelopment District was created. It started out as that plan that Mark had mentioned. It's on our planning website if anybody wants to take a little walk down memory lane, and it had the South Shore, and it had a conceptual plans and ideas for that. So that's really then when the city took a look, thought, you know, it might make sense to do a redevelopment district to kind of start that initiation, initiative of, you know, acquiring properties to put those larger developable areas together. So we actually will be finishing up the Sawdust District Redevelopment Plan, which includes the district by the end of this year. And Mark had mentioned, you know, with the Imagine Oshkosh Plan, that we expanded greatly compared to the plan in 2000 because we included a lot in the South Shore. We knew our South Shore really needed a lot of attention and redevelopment. So we've really been focusing our efforts on the South Shore lately, but we are looking to the North Shore because we do know that there's a lot of opportunities up here, too. So we certainly think that some of the exercises that we'll go through with House Seal Levine and the data that we get will lead to some redevelopment districts in this area to promote redevelopment in our central city.
Then if I could just give a little, couple two cents worth on this, too. You know, I've heard over the years, and even when we have the Imagine Oshkosh Plan, that, you know, if you look at the plan right now and you list at the lists of folks who were in the advisory group, other than staff who might possibly live in the city, there's like less than six people on that list in the advisory group that are either still here or even live in the city. And the stakeholder groups, is there a way in which, as we're pursuing the updates, if we're doing any more stakeholder or public participation, that we require a certain percentage of city residency? Because while that advisory group is not one of our regular boards and commissions, it's a very, you know, I think it's a very expensive shopping trip, right, with taxpayer dollars. So would appreciate emphasis on folks that live in the city. Not to the exclusion of anybody else, just saying, that's my two cents on that.
I appreciate that feedback. We'll certainly, as we did with Sawdust District, we'll look for good representation. Two commercial messages from Parks Director Maurer. Brews in the Zoo Friday, October 14th, 5:00 to 9:00 PM. It's free admission, similar to Brews by the Bay that we had over the summer. We're going to, you know, open up the zoo for adults to kind of enjoy the evening. And then, once we're done cleaning that up, we will have Saturday Zuluween Boo. Their admission fee is required for that, and you can buy advance tickets. You can check out our Facebook page or our website for the You can check out our Facebook page or our website for that information.
Do you know what that costs, Mark?
I believe it's like $3 or something like that. It's very, very affordable. And then outstanding issues is in the agenda packet and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Looks like for those of you who aren't looking for tickets for the Haunted Cemetery Tours, I always get there too late. All three of those are completely sold out. But we do have a lot of chilling, thrilling activities going on this month all around. So look at the Visit Oshkosh calendar for some of those.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.